Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular village council meeting of today, Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. Now, if we could all stand for a moment of silence.
So, the record reflects those members who are present. I would now call the roll. Village Attorney Sarafan.
Present.
Village Manager Benton.
Here.
Councilman Brady.
Here.
Councilman Lefredo.
Here.
Councilman Melz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Birch.
Present.
Mayor Wagner.
Present.
You have quorum.
Thank you. We'll now start our evening off with our presentations. We'll have a legislative update presented by Gomez, Barker and Associates. Go to the podium, please.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman Fausto Gomez, Gomez, Barker Associates. Good evening to you all, and certainly Mayor Wagner and Councilman Lefredo. I have not had the pleasure of meeting you, and I look forward to the team working with you. Basically, it was a very successful legislative session for Miami Shores Village, and what I'm going to do is turn it over to Jonathan Kilman and Cesar Fernandez. You all received a letter that after forty-five years doing this, seven years as Chief of Staff to Maurice Faray, when he was Mayor of the City of Miami and subsequently as a lobbyist, I'm taking a step back and I'll become the Senior Advisor to the firm. And Jonathan will be taking it over to the CEO and the President role. The firm will continue to operate, and Jonathan will operate the firm, and hopefully he doesn't call me too often. But obviously, I will still be available to all of you for anything that you may need. Tom and I work rather closely together, and it's a very good relationship. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce Jonathan Kilman to give you an update about the legislative session.
I look forward to doing this for the next forty-five years. Thank you for that. We had a successful session, and I'm going to speak about a few things today. The first is an appropriation that we were able to obtain. I think you've probably heard this from Senator Pizzo and Representative Joseph. Working closely with them, we were able to obtain a $410,000 appropriation for the village-wide traffic calming. Given the dollars that were sort of available for appropriations, this, I think, was a really good result. There's only $29 million available on the water side statewide, significantly concentrated in a few regions of the state, which meant there were very few options for pursuing an appropriation for a water project. And I know that the traffic calming was a significant priority for the village, particularly taking into account the traffic that's coming into the village and being redirected here as a result of things apps like Waze and other people trying to avoid congestion on roadways going into the village and creating congestion here as well as risks to the residents. So, we were fortunate to attain that. I can say that working with Senator Pizzo and Representative Joseph really was a pleasure. And they came in, and both of them, in, you know, the early terms of their careers and hit the ground running, were extremely diligent, and it was very nice to work with them. So, I'm glad that we were able to forge a partnership with them so quickly, and obviously working closely with the appropriations chairs. The appropriation that we were able to get was accomplished about two-thirds of the way through the subcommittee process, which is a good sign. It wasn't something that sort of struggled till the end. We were able to lock it in. We've worked with the Governor's Office, the Policy Director, who oversees the entire budget review, as well as the Deputy Chief of Staff, Mark Cruz, responsible for transportation funding. So, we've done our work and our diligence to try and make sure to defend against a veto. We're waiting for news on that, but we're optimistic, and we're glad to be a part of it this session. I'm going to kick it over to Cesar Fernandez, who's joined our firm this year and has been working extremely hard to talk about some of the policy issues that we worked on for you this year, and happy to answer any questions once he's wrapped up with that, unless you have one right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's great to be here. I will kind of give some initial context of some of the legislative session, because folks that aren't up there in Tallahassee every day don't realize really what an odd process it is, right? So, ultimately, around three thousand bills get filed, two hundred pass, and they do all of that within sixty days, right? That's the punchline. I'll give some of the highlights of the ones that I think were consequential to Miami Shores Village. First, there was a texting while driving law that passed that strengthens the texting while driving laws, making it a primary offense, as well as a hands-free provision in the law for school zones and for construction sites. The governor signed that last week, and that makes Florida one of the tougher states for texting while driving in the country. The governor also vetoed a bill that was passed. It was his first bill that would have established a moratorium on banning plastic straws in municipalities across the state. I know a lot of municipalities that are more environmentally conscious were concerned about the state tying their hands to be able to push forward these bans on plastic straws. The governor did veto that. There is also a bit of a win for Doctors Charter School here in that, within the budget process, the state actually requires school districts to provide a school resource officer for every single, for every single school that does not have one already, is not providing for one already. That at least shifts some of the burden, the cost burden from the village, over back to the school district in terms of funding that school resource officer, which I understand you all were doing in previous budget cycles. There was a vacation rentals preemption bill that passed the House of Representatives but was defeated in the Senate. I think that's certainly important. It allows local control for communities like this one, which is, of course, essential to maintaining the character of your neighborhoods here. And then there was a bill that essentially preempted all occupational licensing statewide that, again, passed the House of Representatives. You'll hear somewhat of a common theme there installed in the Senate, and that did not make its way to the governor. Some of the bills that we were tracking that did not necessarily have an ideal result. There was a vegetable garden preemption bill passed. Everyone here on this dais is very familiar with that topic. That bill passed, and it, you know, it's sent to the governor for his approval. We'll see whether he signs it or not.
Could you provide text about why that bill passed?
Sure. And we'll say, like, it's just the reality when the Chairman of the Appropriations Committee in the Senate authors a bill, it is likely to pass. There are a lot of legislators that have budget items that they don't, they'd like to see stay in the budget, and, you know, it's something that, it's a really tough position when not just the appropriations chairman sponsors something, but also fast-tracks it the way he did.
And I just want to, we aligned ourselves with League of Cities on that, and so there was significant opposition. But even the League of Cities was in a position where they couldn't gain enough traction because you have too many individual members of the Senate who are effectively, you know, I wouldn't say beholden to, but certainly want to do right by the appropriations chairman of the Senate, and he's very influential, not just in his own chamber, but in the House as well, for the same reason. Obviously, it's an ideological issue. It is one of import to this village, but also one that's of import to cities around the state, villages and municipalities around the state. There are these ideological lines being drawn. We were fortunate to see a signal from the governor on the straw ban, because it's an ideological bill, not one of practical preemption. Practical being something like a technology which requires multi-jurisdictional use, like a ride-sharing app, right? Which the legislature may step in and say, "Well, practically, this can't function on a jurisdiction-by-jurisdiction basis." Here you have an ideological type of preemption where the governor decided to step in, and so we're going to see this continue to play out. But in this case, with the appropriations chairman behind it, they had a lot of strength. Again, we did align ourselves with the League of Cities, but there was a tension that was difficult to overcome.
So, as you all know, we have one more legislative session in front of us with the existing leadership in the House and the Senate. We should expect similar outcome, I think, next year in that you'll see some more preemption bills coming out of the House of Representatives. Unclear whether the Senate will have that similar appetite for those preemption bills, but we'll keep, we'll stay on top of it and certainly hear from you as we're developing the 2020 priorities for the village, what is important and what's consequential. And then we're gonna, and, you know, we'll just be frank with you all. I think there's a growing concern that the state's infrastructure, especially around water, is getting to a critical point where the dollars that are available for those projects are just not matching at all the demand for those improvements. We're going to keep pushing, but like Jonathan said, it was a $29 million budget for the entire state. Some of these projects are well into the millions of dollars, as this village knows, and we'll continue to work to try to get somewhere in that world of water funding, but it's a little bit tough at this moment.
Yeah. The piece of good news is we have a governor that's very focused on these issues. Water in particular is a priority as part of these environmental plans, and so we may see reversal of that trend. We'll keep you apprised. In the meantime, obviously, what's critical for us is to know what your priorities are so that we can begin to try and lay the groundwork for them, both with our local legislators but also with the appropriations chairs and the Governor's Office.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Gentlemen, the $410,000 for traffic calming, when would we consider that to be final, that we would get it so there's no chance it could get chopped or removed?
So, the Governor's Office indicated that they would be giving a, you know, rolling out the vetoes sooner rather than later. We don't know the specific date, but we've been told it'll be in the very near future. It could be any day now, I guess, is the closest I would say to try and be honest and transparent. I will follow up with the Governor's Office and see if we can get a handle on it. They don't typically give away their timeframe, but I would say it could be any day.
And procedurally, it's all or nothing?
Oh, yeah.
With respect to the entire budget or?
No, the four-ten.
Oh, yes.
Can't reduce it. He could veto it if.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you.
Right, okay, I'm sorry. And if the veto doesn't occur, the funds will become available after July 1st when the fiscal, the state's fiscal starts to go.
Attorney Sarafan?
Yeah, on the vegetable garden issue, I read the veto message on the plastic straw preemption, and there was some very encouraging language in there about home rule, the type of issue that's best dealt with at the local level, not, didn't appear to be a pressing statewide problem. Do you think he meant it?
So, this sort of relates to what I said earlier about the difference between sort of an ideological preemption and a practical one. So, there's practical, which is the application of, let's say, a technology. I'd also say there are political practicalities. I don't know where this one falls on the spectrum of political practicalities. The reality is, this was a high priority for the appropriations chairman of the Senate, and so that's certainly going to weigh in with the governor's consideration process. The governor has not yet signaled how he feels about this particular issue. I will say probably the governor is going to be one who supports property rights, and so that may be a counterbalance to the position that we might want him to take on this. We'll certainly, you know, have conversations with the Governor's Office, keep you up to date. I don't have a great answer, other than those are the factors, I think, that play into the consideration.
That's a good answer. I'm aware the vegetable garden bill was strongly supported by the property rights group locally, and I do think that's how it's being pitched.
Right.
Anyone else? Thank you, gentlemen, for your report. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Next up, we'll have a presentation by the, well, we'll have our Fine Arts Commission annual report. Ms. Ackley?
Susan Ackley, 11/19, where the East 99th. Good evening, everyone, and welcome, Madam Mayor. This is my first council meeting with you. We did include a brief synopsis with your packets, and if I will answer any questions, if you have any. (inaudible) not about page two. Inside joke. No, okay. We did give you a very little gift at your places this evening. It is an original illustration done by one of our residents at our moonlight concert, and I was captivated by it, and I wanted to share it with you. Kind of a symbol of how much our residents enjoy our events. I do not expect to see it in your living room, but many of us have binders for different activities, so assuming that you have one for council notes, this would be a great front cover. And I'd like to say thank you to Miriam Rojas and Carol Hoffman, to members of our board that have made the extra effort to be here this evening. Victor Bruce, our Vice Chair, would have been, but he's where he should be, at a school event with one of his children. I would like to give some, well, the lobbyist said context, and that's such a great word, to what we do. We have had an annual spring concert for thirty-five years. The Fine Arts Commission was founded in 1984, and in recent years, at the urging, strong urging, of Mayor Glenn, we added two new ones. The January Moonlight Concert, and we do want to thank our sponsors. We have a guaranteed moon every year. By Illuminay, an event company who provides a great light on stage, and we added a February Fireside Concert, and we give the tip of the hat to our Public Works Department. Jim McCoy is a member of the team there, not the mayor, who created two cradles that we build fires in. So, they built the structure, light the fire, maintain it throughout the event, and also prevent any accidents. So, we want to thank them as well. And for all three concerts this year, we received a $4,500 grant from the Miami Shores Community Alliance, and what we did when we submitted was propose a matching grant. If they would fund the music, then we would match those funds with all of the marketing activities, which we did do with the village budget. We also want to thank Michael Stock, who was unable to be here this evening and other longtime board member. He has always gotten us some of the very freshest and best talent available in our region. We start our season every year in October with an art exhibit with our partner Brockway Memorial Library. We've already selected this year's artist to be approved in June by the library board, but we're excited about him. And we continue on with another art exhibit either March or April each year, and we combine that with a gallery night event, because we also introduce the Village Hall Lobby's new one-year installation. Village Hall's lobby to our village manager is his business office. To me, it is an art gallery, so we share. We also have art in public places, which is a personal passion of mine, and fortunately, the board has embraced it. We currently have five locations, starting on the east side with the Aquatic Center, Rita's Ball. We have the 9/11 Sculpture in Memorial Park, Village Hall's Front Lawn, which will be having a new mural this coming year. This one's been here three years, which is a year too long. And the lobby, we also consider art in public places, and then our brand-new Sculpture Park, which we're very proud of. The previous council approved it for one year. We're hoping for a two-year extension on that, if possible. There's been no controversy, just compliments. And last but not least, we always have one very special event, and that this year was a dance performance. In previous years, it's been opera or string quartets, folk and acoustic music, and we got a very generous grant this year from Chairwoman Audrey Edmondson, the Commissioner for District Three. We would not have been able to afford the caliber of dance company nor the venue of Miami Theater Center without that grant. So, if you add it up, we actually doubled our budget last year, because we received $9,000 in grants, which allowed us to have a very active and, I personally think, successful season. Again, I will answer any questions you might have.
I do have a question.
Sure.
And this is just for my understanding. With the Fine Arts Commission, how do you choose the art for public places or in the lobby there? Is it the commission that chooses collectively? Is there a process?
There is a process, depending on what is at issue. There is what's called a professional advisory committee that can be convened. However, on our board, we have several qualified people who are members, who would be considered for a professional advisory committee. Miriam Rojas is one, Carol Hoffman is another, Joe Clark and Victor Bruce. All four would qualify. So, we do, it's always competitive, but a friendly competition, shall we say? The October artists that I just mentioned, we reached out to the Bakehouse. Okay, you do know it, great. And solicited interest from artists. We got five artists who were interested, and we narrowed it down to one and a half. Definitely the October one and perhaps the April one as well.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Oh, so, I just wanted to give my compliments, once again, to the Fine Arts Commission, because an incredible amount of work comes out of that commission, and we are all the beneficiaries of it, and we appreciate it very much. And you can tell by the numbers that turned up for these free events that there's a good appreciation of that among our residents, and it's always exciting and interesting and fun, so we appreciate the work.
Thank you. We consider ourselves a working board. Thank you, counsel, for your support.
Councilman Melz, I think, got a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Susan. Now, Susan, I want to thank you for the report. I want to thank the commission and yourself for all the work. The events are fantastic. And I do want to make a comment. As much as I don't like paper, this was very well done. A great summary of all your events and your budget, and it really helps me, as a councilperson, and I'm sure my fellow members agree, to understand what you do and the money that's allocated and where it goes. So, I know this didn't, this wasn't done in ten minutes, so I do thank you for producing this, whoever did it, on your commission, and it was a fantastic job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's a great way to end my presentation.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our Recreation Advisory Committee annual report.
Unfortunately, my laptop does not have an HDMI port. I'm going to do my best here to at least try to show you some of our presentation that we've worked on. But good evening. My name is Manny Hadad, and I currently serve as the Chairman of the Recreation Advisory Committee. The committee consists of nine residents appointed by the council for two-year terms. Current members include Jaclyn O'Donnell, Anna Blackman, Karen Smith-Colesse, Jefferson Geimer, Julia Montero, Lisa Satir, Elise Johnson-Henry, and our co-chairman, Michael O'Hara. The objective of the Recreation Advisory Committee is to advise the Recreation Department on their programs and activities. Through the committee members' interaction with the Recreation Department and their activities, the committee has identified a number of items. And in addition, this past year, we have set aside fifteen to twenty minutes every meeting, every month, to discuss the opportunities to improve the existing recreation center and any ideas on how to responsibly expand the current facility. And we'll talk further on that in the presentation. Accomplishments this past year include a ADA ramp to access the top. We didn't have that in the past, not ADA compliant, and we had an installation of activity walls that can be helpful for children with varying disabilities and sensory processing disorders. So, we're really proud of that, and we thank staff for getting that done. Good job, Agent. We also have new electronic scoreboards for our baseball and softball fields, adding to the enjoyment of the game for both our parents and our players. June 1st will be our inaugural three-on-three basketball tournament. There's still time to sign up, so if you enjoy playing basketball, get three friends and get on the court, just compete. The board, excuse me, the department, has also obtained capital revenues to install security cameras at the fieldhouse and the recreation center, scheduled to be installed sometime this summer. Committee recommendations for this year, I'm sorry, I actually tapped a little bit sooner, offer a captillion program for our pre-teen and early-teen residents. At our November meeting, Village Resident Patrick Collins suggested our sports programs focus on standardizing coaching techniques that focus on the fundamentals of the sport being played, which we agree. And I think as the child moves up in age, the more fundamentals that they learn, the better the enjoyment of the sport as they get older. Implement online registration for our programs where residents and non-residents can sign up for our programs. Currently, now, they need to show up in person at the rec center or the fieldhouse. Host a movie night downtown. It's actually something that we've been talking about, I think, since Councilman Melz was on the committee. Host a downtown, I mean, excuse me, a movie night downtown in conjunction with downtown businesses or Plaza 98, Chamber of Commerce, something where we can have our residents come out at night, enjoy a movie, and spend some money. The tarps covering the Long Jump Sand Pit in Constitution Park, they become loose, and they vary in color and size. Staff has informed us that the pit will be removed and sod it, but not yet accomplished. The sand pit will be rebuilt next year, and it's hard suggesting that a fitted earth-tone colored tarp be used to cover the pit. Right now, it's kind of oversized. As you see in the back, we've got burnt grass, and it's just aesthetically not pleasing. Approved Recreation Department capital improvement projects for 2018 and 2019 include the replacement of windows and doors at the rec center and fieldhouse, installation of the security cameras, which we talked about earlier, purchase of the new movie projector and screen, new bathroom countertops at the aquatic center, new fencing at the southeast corner of the rec center that's off of 96th Street near the railroad track, and the purchase of a new thirty-six-passenger bus. That's for, especially for our summer camp activities. That's vital, because we take long trips. We take them down to the Keys and also to the water park up in Broward or Palm Beach, I forget. It's actually, might even be Palm Beach. It's in Riviera. Recreation Center and Fieldhouse discussions. After our last presentation to the village about a year ago, village, the committee approved a motion to redirect our Recreation Center discussions from a new rec center to improving and enhancing our existing rec center. As a result of our discussions, the committee agreed on the following recommendations. General maintenance recommendations include refurbishing or refinishing the wood flooring, new window treatments, window shades, new LED two-by-four lay-in light fixtures, because replacing the existing inconsistent fluorescent light fixtures that are there now, replacing flooring throughout, either carpeting, replacing with LVT, or coming back with new carpet, and interior refresh paint of the, of both the fieldhouse and the rec center. Larger capital improvement projects include demo, there's a thought to demo this stage in the auditorium, to afford the gymnastics program additional space to run up. to afford the gymnastics program additional space to run up for their vault exercise. For their vault exercise. More space is needed for the gymnastics program, which is, right now, our most profitable program. Talking about fencing in that southeast corner and offering it up for birthday parties so we can get some additional revenues. Remodel the rec center lobby bathrooms and fieldhouse bathrooms. Consider adding a restroom in the tennis center. There's been conversations of the fact that when you go out to the tennis center and the rec center is closed and the fieldhouse bathrooms are closed, there's really nowhere to go to the bathroom if you're at the tennis center. And the other suggestion would be to cover the basketball courts with a steel structure, as you see here pictured. So we can also use, we can also install solar panels. Could be considered on the new roof covering the basketball courts. The proposed structure, what you see here is the gym at Miami Country Day. The structure proposed by the committee can be closed in in the future. So it's basically a phased plan. Here you'll see the gym here at Miami Country Day. It's a similar structure as you saw in the previous photograph, but it's closed in and air-conditioned. So we can have some funding now to cover the courts and then later on, when there's additional funds down the line, it can be closed in. So it's a phased program. Funding sources, we talked about, you know, offering tax-deductible sponsorships through the Miami Shores Community Alliance, allocating additional general revenue funds to improve and enhance the existing center. The recreation department is a revenue-producing department. I'd like the board to understand that, the council to understand that. And after the public safety and equipment purchasing of garbage trucks and police cars, the rec department should be next in line and the next highest priority for funding because it does produce money. So any capital injection into the department will somehow, at a certain level, help pay for itself. Another thought is putting out a less expensive bond offering for our residents. You know, the residents can be resurveyed, see where their appetite for funding is and offer a bond that is at that level. That's about it. One thing that we could talk about as well is, you know, in the roof structure, we can get some MIMO features implemented into design. So here you can see on a lot of these pictures of buildings that you'll see on Biscayne Boulevard. This is on Sixty-Second Street where this has a ramped, kind of like a sloped roof with, you know, with your structure, your columns in the front. Here's another one, a little bit more rounded with concrete eyebrows, which is very typical of the MIMO architectures. And here's one with the eyebrows but with fins. Instead of structural columns, you have concrete fins that could come out. So that would be something that could be consistent with our neighborhood and our architecture. So we've got really creative here. With that, I'll open up any questions.
Councilman LaFredo?
Yes. Thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. Do you know, any idea what the design and build estimates are for the concrete, not the concrete, the steel structure for the basketball courts?
I'm estimating. I mean, this is something that I've gone out and called some contractor friends. I am, I'm in the real estate development business. I do have a general contractor's license, but I don't practice the construction. But in talking with contractors that do, I mean, it's something that we could pencil in one point two to one point five million dollars to cover and roof the basketball courts. Basketball courts, more or less about twenty thousand square feet. That'll give us two courts as we have now and potentially a third court perpendicular to the two existing ones. That could be a high school.
Would that be with a wooden floor or with the same concrete floor?
That would actually have to be, right now, with a concrete floor because right now we have asphalt. And what happens is, once you cover it, code won't allow you to have asphalt underneath something that's covered because asphalt is flammable. So it would have to be removed and then repoured with concrete.
Okay. The other question I have is...
No solar panels.
The other question I have, a lot of things came up in the campaign by various constituents. One of the things was the usability, let's just say, of the bathrooms in the fieldhouse. Did you, are you getting any money in the present budget to renovate those bathrooms in the fieldhouse?
We are. I don't know if the fieldhouse, I'm not sure. I think that we have in the five-year plan. But right now, I think we have money to renovate the bathrooms in the community center.
So you don't have anything right now?
No.
For the fieldhouse?
But we can use it.
Yeah. That's what I heard. Okay. Thank you very much.
I agree with it.
Anyone else have any questions? I do. I have a couple of questions. I want to back all the way up to the three-on-three basketball tournament.
Yes.
Just a quick question, is that co-ed? Is that just boys? It's boys and girls, right? Boys only?
Those boys right now.
Okay, just curious. Okay, all right.
I think boys and girls would be...
I think that would be fantastic.
And I think if there is a, we can always, if there is a...
If there's an appetite for it, certainly.
Yes.
Okay, great.
The answer is yes.
Great. And with regard to your report, which I also think is good, when you talk about a less expensive bond offering, are you talking about that in the sense of just the remodeling that you're talking about or overall?
Well, I think overall. I mean, I think once we get into a bond offering, part of the, I think, the path to success for a successful bond would be a plan, a complete plan. So it would be something where we would have a plan that would include not only a basketball courts, but maybe what else we have in mind for the community center. Whether it be, one other opportunity would be locker rooms. But that would require bringing in sewer, which I'd like to point out that our village manager attended our meeting last month and educated us very well on the priorities of the city as far as, you know, our budget size and what he can do with it and how he prioritizes it and some of the more expensive or the money that is needed for some of our ideas. So the ideas that we presented today are kind of like, not as many, I'd say, or it's just a limited amount of ideas because of after that meeting, we noticed, we realized that some of the ideas were just pie in the skies. So I think at this point, to answer your question, would be identifying what needs we have, bathrooms. I think covered basketball court is just a need because here it just gets so darn hot that when it comes to summertime with our kids and we have these summer programs, there's really no place to put them. Angie's constantly talking about, I need more space, I need more space. A covered basketball court at least affords her the opportunity to bring in, to put them in a place where it's shaded and obviously cooler. So it's a function of sitting down, prioritizing, putting cost to those items. And then the reason I mention about resurveying our village residents because the survey, when it came back to us last time, it told us that the community had an appetite for a certain level of increased tax, I guess, if you will. Or, and if we can identify what that level is and put a, and see how much that represents as far as how much bond we can cover as far as debt, then we know how much money we can spend. And then we can, and then we can provide, then, once we have that information, then we can have a plan that we can then submit to the residents for votes.
I have another question with regard to the basketball court. Do we have, and I'm asking this purely out of ignorance, do we have a basketball league here in Miami Shores?
What we have is a program for recreational. It's recreation. And it's...
It's organized?
It's organized.
Throughout the year?
Not throughout the year. It starts in January, usually takes around, up to like March, just before baseball starts. It's for kids five to thirteen, fourteen. And usually as the kids get older, we find a situation where our participation is less. So staff does a great job of bringing in other communities to come in and play. So other rec departments from North Miami, from Biscayne, from the North Beach, and they come in and participate in, you know, and schedule them.
If we had a covered basketball court, do you think we could, would it insist us in coming up with a league? Just curious.
Absolutely. I mean, I think it's definitely an opportunity. I know that there is, the three-on-three tournament, we'll see how much interest we have and that could be a springboard for a league. What, the other thing about a covered basketball court, what it would do is make the schedule a little bit more consistent, in essence. We don't have these rainouts. So, or if it just rains for thirty minutes, all of a sudden, now you can't play. Or even less. I mean, actually, the basketball courts, it's painted, so any time that it rains, the lines get very slippery and it's really just a safety hazard. So you're pulling your players off. But if you have a basketball court that's covered, you know, you have a six-thirty game on Thursday, you know you're playing at six-thirty on Thursday. And there's no, no, there's nothing, I mean, short of a hurricane or what have you, or a storm or whatever, I mean, that game's going to be played.
Okay. Will we get a copy of your report?
Yes, I can. Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Mr. LaFredo?
I just wanted to copy.
Yeah.
You're welcome. So I just wanted to ask you, Manny. You did mention all the names of the nine people on your committee. Are any of them here?
No.
Okay. Okay, so, and when you have these discussions about during your meetings, the time that you allocate to talk about the recreation facilities, would you say that you've settled on a prioritized list? That, and that's what you gave us in the report that starts with floors? Okay, and works its way on down through to the bathrooms?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I understand that that's tied to funding and yet some of those are in the five-year plan already, right?
Yeah, some of them are a five-year plan. Angie's already also educated us on that. Some of them are just like day-to-day maintenance type of stuff that she can roll in into the budget, existing budget. So some of the stuff, I mean, the window blinds, she's getting pricing and moving on those. So those are more like maintenance items that can be done almost instantaneously. So I call those low-hanging fruit where we can pick those and there's a lot of value to that, there's a value add. When you have consistent lighting, you know, the place is going to look, obviously, it's going to be more lit and it's going to be more welcoming. You don't have these dark little codes in certain places and that will really, I think, will, just a curb appeal. The value of that is, I think, is great. I'd like to add that the committee, what we did was we toured the facility. So, you know, we took a forty-five-minute tour. We walked around, we looked at places, we looked above ceilings, we just, and that's how we came up with our list.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Manny, for your report. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We'll now move to public comments. And for those of you who are wishing to make public comments, please state your name and address for the record. And also, please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Miriam Rojas, five-three-four Northeast Ninety-Fifth Street. Hello, Council. I wanted to speak on two items. Well, one is that I just learned with the four hundred thousand in the traffic calming, which is amazing. And I would implore that council consider using that earmarking it for flashing crosswalks. I think that there are at least a good four, definitely six, that we could use, especially on our north-south corridors, those arteries, those highways and byways that everyone uses to bypass our village. So I think it would be really great flashing crosswalks because it would provide so many residents, a safe crossing, would provide also our village to feel more cohesive east to west, which is something that I think that on the forums and everywhere we've been hearing about this divide of west and how we get across and North Miami Avenue having the forty mile an hour speed limit versus Biscayne Boulevard, which is only thirty-five, which I think is kind of crazy. But, so please, please, consider flashing crosswalks. I believe that they're like a hundred thousand dollars a pop or something. And when we didn't have funding, we waited a long time. It took almost three years maybe for it to get the one on Sixth Avenue. So I think that with this money that we have, we can really push forward and get this done ASAP. The other thing I wanted to mention was the possible action item sponsored by Vice Mayor Birch with the election financing of candidates. I personally am in support of CAP, Individual Campaign Contribution Limit. I think that would be in line more with the character of our village. We have a great village, quaint. The character of it should be definitely maintained and I think that there is an opportunity to provide some limits. I think that there was some talk amongst residents that felt a little bit uneasy about the amount of money that was coming in from outside sources outside the village. So I think that if by capping it to something a little bit better, and we'll discuss what those numbers should be. But I also think that one thing can be discussed potentially would be a percentage, maybe, of those funds that maybe at least fifty percent or fifty-one percent of those funds of an individual campaign should be within the village or some sort. So, you know, strongly encourage for you all to consider those. I think it would, at the end of the day, encourage candidates to search deeper within the village itself and reach out to residents for just outreach and support and contributions. So something of that nature. I'd love to see. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Vanessa Flores. I live at Eighty-Five Northwest One-O-One Street. My situation is today, I've lived in here forty years, I'm only for my property. And my situation is, for three years and a half, I've sent emails, I've called the police, I've called the police enforcement, I've called, I don't know, everybody. Nobody tried to help me. So today, I want to talk especially to the mayor because she is a woman like me. He understands my position. I grew up two kids here and I'm a very clean person and I respect everybody. I have neighbors, One-O-One Street Northwest and the next neighbor is One-Zero-Two Northwest. They come in every single day to the First Avenue exactly. Front to my front door and they deposit a lot of garbage, material, construction, everything. And I'm so tired. I'm sixty-five years old, I'm a single woman. I grew up two kids here and they're nice and respectful person and nobody respects me. I tried to talk with Miami Shore, police, police enforcement, everybody. Nobody listened to me. Across from my door, it was a big, big hole, deep. Somebody's coming down, they stood on Miami Shore. I called Scott David, he's coming to fill it up. It was clean, perfect. Friday, that guy start to put it again, it's tough. I take a picture because I have a camera. When he saw me, he's running inside because he know what he do is wrong. And what I do is I call the police. Because when I buy the house here, they told me when I deposit something, garbage, whatever, I have to call. Because the court enforcement and the public work, they have to know I put a garbage, whatever, and they coming to pick it up. And there's people coming for another area and deposit in the First Avenue. They don't live in the First Avenue. This is the number one. The number two, he has a two-pilgrim, two-dog pilgrim. Four week ago, I was in my garden with my granddaughter. And the dog is coming to my garden to try to bite my granddaughter. And I call the police. I'm so tired. I need somebody listen to me and put a sign out there. No illegal doping. Today, I'll think about that. And I'm going to you listen to me clear because I'm tired. I'm thinking we need a new city manager because the city manager is coming to my house and he told me what I have to do is I have to take a tag number and I call the police.
Ms. Flores, your time has elapsed.
I'm no police officer. I'm no court enforcement. I'm no public work. I'm resident. And I'm paid because I want to see the area, city area clean. So I need a respect because I'm sixty-five years old. I'm no little child.
Thank you. I've, uh, thank you. I've written down your address and, and you have made your point and, um, we'll follow up with you.
I'm sorry. And I'll take a picture.
No, no, no.
And, and we'll follow up with you.
I take a tag number and nobody do nothing. So Miami Shore.
Man.
They can help me.
Thank you.
I need it. You told me right now.
Thank you.
Nobody want to help me, right?
Not tonight. This is public comment. You've come, you've made your comment.
I have to say my comment.
You've done it and your time is up.
I have to say my comment. I need it and we need a new city manager because that's too much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody want to help me. I know what I have to do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sean Rogers. I live at one-twenty-one Northeast One-Hundredth Street. Um, I'm here tonight and this is.
Nadine Davy Rogers and I'm Sean's wife, one-two-one Northeast One-Hundredth Street.
We received a notice, uh, a few weeks ago saying there was a proposal to, uh, implement permitting, parking permitting on our section of the street. Um, I did make a call to find out where that proposal came from. Uh, I was given sort of general thing that it came from somebody on the street. Uh, I don't know who that was, um, but beside the point. My personal opinion is we're not, uh, I don't think we're in a position where we need that at this point. I think I understand the reasoning for it. Um, I, it may be affecting this very close end of the street. I guess I'd like to hear what the proposal was. But I think for most of us on the street, my opinion, uh, that it's a solution that's not needed right now. Um, I, if there's something where Second Avenue, the traffic grows extensively, um, I, you know, and it does come down our street farther, uh, then I would certainly be welcoming of such a proposal. But I think at this point, it seems like it's more of a burden on us than a help. I think if somebody, I think on Ninety-Eighth Street perhaps, where there's more, uh, uh, commercial action happening at this point, I could see people on that street maybe wanting that. Um, I'm not quite sure what the traffic is considered on the street. I guess it's mostly coming from the Village Hall. And at that point, I think then we need to think about, we have all these parking places out here, but most of them are occupied by city vehicles, predominantly of police vehicles. Uh, and, you know, if that's the cause of the problem with parking, then that may be something that has to be considered, uh, differently. And if it is affecting one or two, uh, houses here, I was wondering if we might then think of a solution, think of alternative solutions, uh, to address the problem. Because I certainly would understand if people are having problems with parking. Um, but rather than impose something down the full block, we might look for something simpler.
I, I would only augment that by saying that at, at, at least four homes of the ten on the street, um, don't support, uh, the, the permit process. Um, and there may be others where we weren't able to collect, um, consensus on the street, but it's certainly at least four of the homes do. Some of the, um, uh, members weren't able to join us tonight, but I'd love to share that as well.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you. John Adrabi, fifty-seven Northeast Ninety-third Street, here in the shores. Uh, I want to speak on the ordinance for campaign finance, um, the proposed ordinance. I've been working in, in campaign finance and politics for over fifteen years, uh, at the highest levels, both in Florida and nationally. Uh, I agree the campaign finance laws and money in politics is a problem, however, um, I think all finance ordinances should be, should be, uh, uh, put together and considered and written with input from experts uh, on both the local, state, or national level. Uh, while altruistic in, in thought and with good intentions, many ordinances and laws pertaining to campaign finance can have unintended consequences. Uh, I believe that the proposed ordinance can in fact have some of those unintended consequences. Presumably, the ordinance was designed to lower contribution amounts and to encourage folks to run, right? And we want to make sure that we encourage people to run and generally limit the money in politics. Uh, the ordinance, I think, would have the opposite effect in that it would benefit those that are already in office, uh, uh, who already don't adhere to term limits. Many of you have been on ballots multiple times, and as a resident, I've come in and voted for many of you multiple times. If you limit the amount an individual can raise per contribution, you're lowering the amount, uh, an individual can raise from his or her own donor network. Meaning that to mount a campaign against any of you, it would be very difficult, uh, considering that you have name ID to get your name out there. If I have a donor pool of, of ten people that can contribute X, let's just say a thousand dollars, that's a ten thousand dollar campaign that I can run against any incumbent. If you limit it to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that donor pool now comes down to twenty-five-hundred dollars, which may make it impossible for me to mount a campaign against someone. Um, if a candidate can't raise the necessary funds, uh, to get her, his or her name ID up there, um, it's gonna be hard to run against anybody who's been on the village council previously. Um, this, this ordinance also does nothing to limit self-funding. Um, if you limit the amount a candidate can take per contribution, you increase the chances that self-funders, uh, mostly from the East Shores, uh, will run, uh, run and opponents will not have the ability to raise funds to match the war chest or to compete against them. So I would respectfully ask everybody to consider not passing this ordinance. I'm happy to, to, to work with anybody to, to come up with ways that would be, uh, uh, much more beneficial to, I think, the entire public and anybody who would like to run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, council members, mayor. My name's Colin Ross. I live on One Hundredth Street, uh, One Thirty-four. And I'd like to echo, uh, the Rogers comments about parking on the street. Um, currently it's not a burden to us. Uh, I don't think there's a need for permits. Uh, certainly, the proposal that's at hand doesn't really fit for necessarily our street. Um, there's some suggestions I might have that might enable us to do it in the future. But I think people that, uh, come to my house to park and they don't have a pass and they're ticketed, it's cumbersome for us. So maybe there's a suggestion that if it was dead set on requiring us to have a parking pass, that residents get a hall pass for twelve times a year with, with, with which a ticket is issued, they can, uh, fight those offenses. But I think generally that's cumbersome for our police officers. Um, it probably makes more sense to see the traffic happen in Second Street, um, which I think everyone's welcoming. We have a bunch of new restaurants coming online. It's a little early in the process to require that parking. But maybe down the line, if there's a lot of, uh, excellent activity from people attending those restaurants, which we all hope that there is, uh, we've been waiting for the restaurants for, I don't even know, ha- many, many years, and it seems like they're coming. Um, and that maybe it makes more sense to, uh, issue those types, have those discussions when that type of traffic occurs. Today, there's not enough traffic, so. Um, and I have one other comment because I do live, uh, next to a police station. This is just a general comment. I have a bunch of small children, um, that we like to obviously play in and around our yard. Um, and, uh, something that continues to occur, and I don't mean to interfere, and I know there's obviously, you know, very uh, important police business, but the police officers speed up and down that street like nobody's business. It is unbelievably dangerous for anybody to play on our street. And now, if I see a police officer speed from the police station out, hey, I understand there's official police business. Eighty percent of the police officers that speed down our street are speeding to the police station and actually parking. And, um, I actually asked someone, it was act, I think it was someone in a, um, it was an officer in a private vehicle. They sped down my street at like eight in the morning. They were playing baseball in the front yard. I was pulling out of the driveway at the time, just as he had parked. It was just coincidental. And I said, hey, you know, it was a woman. I said, I appreciate, you know, you not drive sixty past our street. Uh, our, our house is a little bit, that's unappealing. Um, she gave me the middle finger and then I said, wow, that's interesting. And then I, as I pulled off, an officer came and, and grabbed me. Didn't grab me, he, he just said, hey, hey, stop. What's going on here? And I said, hey, um, what's going on is that someone drove by my street very fast. They were in a private vehicle, so turns out there was somebody else. I said this and he said that, uh, I had called her a bitch for passing my street. It was, I had all my children in the car. I would never use that. So he was embarrassed by it. I'm embarrassed by it. I'm just embarrassed by the way they drive up and down the damn street. That's it. I mean, there's an easy solution. Don't speed on our street. They expect the same for every other person on the street. They should be the same. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm, uh, Adam Shepherd, two-ninety-five Northeast Ninety-Fifth Street. And that is a great segue for what I wanted to discuss. Speeding. We have ten residents on Ninety-Fifth Street with ten kids, less than ten, from Second Avenue to the Grand Concourse. Um, it's a speedway. Uh, before my wife and I bought and invested in our house, there were speed bumps that were there. So it's, it's not just us that realizes this. Someone was wise enough ten or fifteen years ago to put in the speed bumps. And, uh, the shores has grown and prospered since then and technology has changed things. We have Uber and Uber Eats and Waze and cars coming up and down our street, sometimes doing thirty miles an hour and sometimes doing sixty miles an hour. I've written a formal petition. I've met with Mr. Benton, who was kind enough to give me his time. I've written to the former mayor. I've gathered my neighbors. Um, I believe that the squeaky wheel gets the grease and we're all here squeaking. Uh, the front of our house is very difficult to cross at any point in time because of speeders. And the back of our house, because of, um, the traffic from the gym and Dunkin' Donuts and new businesses that have come in and we're all enjoying them, but the, the common thread is that between gym hours in the morning and in the afternoon and in the evening, we get people driving down our alley texting. And in my business, there's three words that trigger a response: life, safety, issue. And I have used those words on three separate occasions. And then eight separate occasions, my daughter has almost been hit in the back alley from someone just not paying attention. Or driving too fast or, you know, figuring that it's a public road. It's not a public road. There's lots of streets in the shores that are closed off and there's increasingly streets that have modern, uh, speed bumps that are quite effective. Our speed bumps just, they, they don't work well anymore. And, um, we get a lot of traffic off I-Ninety-five and a lot of traffic coming off the Grand Concourse as a shortcut where those two-hundred yards turn into a racetrack. I don't want to come up here with one of my kids being hit or my neighbors. And, uh, this is my formal request that the, the, to the deus, that the money that is coming up, um, be applied to Ninety-Fifth Street. It is, it is a dangerous place and that's not what it should be. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Vinton. I reside at two-seventy-one Northeast Ninety-Fifth Street. And, uh, I am, uh, here with several of my other neighbors. And, uh, and I'm here to discuss with you very briefly how you could also allocate some of these funds of your four hundred thousand dollars to help keep our streets safe. Being that I live in the vacant lot next to the shopping center on Second Avenue between Third. And, um, there is an incredible amount of traffic that comes from east and west. Everyone coming, uh, looking for a shortcut to get to Biscayne Boulevard or whether they're just trying to avoid the traffic light that is on Sixth and Ninety-Sixth. Uh, and what is happening is exactly what Adam has just said. The cars will just come speeding through at all hours of the day. The speed bumps are terribly ineffective. I'm aware that they have put tabletops, uh, that run parallel to the golf course. I believe that's a Hundred and First or, um, Ninety-Ninth or One-Hundredth Street that runs parallel by the tennis courts. Those are very effective. I know that I take my son around there who has his driver's ed license. And we drive very slowly there because the speed bumps, you cannot pick up speed. That's something that Ninety-Fifth Street could use from Second Avenue all the way down to Sixth Avenue. I've had the opportunity over the last maybe month and a half to meet, uh, individually each homeowner that lives on our three-block area that goes all the way down to Sixth Avenue. Um, the people that live at three-twenty-five are unable to be here. They're, they're at Kane Concourse or Grand Concourse in the corner of Ninety-Fifth. There are accidents that take place there on a daily basis because there is no stop sign. So you have cars that just race through in a rush to get to Fifth Avenue. They actually have the audacity to pass you even if you're doing thirty miles an hour. I myself have a child, uh, and I have pets and I have neighbors and our children, um, are friendly. Our neighbor, our neighbors are friendly. So the kids pass from house to house. They go behind the alleys. They open the gates. My child is a little older, so the younger ones like to talk to my older child. They want to do things together. But it happens where you open your back gate and there is a car that will come speeding by. Whether you are just going to trim your trees, whether you are going to just pull out your trash for Monday pickup, whether you're just going to take your dog for a walk. The people inevitably, at all hours of the day, there is a circle that just runs around in those streets. And someday, I really hate to think about it, but something bad is going to happen. Because when there are children around and the parent is not there, they are gonna try and venture out on their own. So I would really hope, I know that, um, I left something at Mr., uh, Mr. Melz prior to the, uh, maybe you had found a petition. I had an opportunity.
Thank you.
Miriam. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be quick. Antonio Nado, uh, ninety-two fifty Northeast Tenth Court. I'm, I'm here in, uh, on behalf of the education. I know you guys are putting together your priorities as a council. And I want to make sure that education is on the top, uh, of your mind and, uh, on the top of the priority list. I know there's work, work being done, but I want to make sure we speed up as much as we can. And, uh, hopefully this year, this school year that starts in the summer, uh, already get some of the, the benefits that we're working on. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Antonio.
Uh, my name's Aaron Heinz. I live at twenty-five Northeast Ninety-Fifth Street. And, uh, I'm Adam and Tracy's neighbor, so. My name's Aaron Heim, I'm at twenty-five Northeast Ninety-Fifth Street, and I'm Adam and Tracy's neighbor, so you probably guess what I'm going to talk about, but I support everything they said, and just a couple of specific things, I don't want to take up any of your time, but you know, it seems like the traffic between Fifth, sorry, between Northeast Second and Grand Concourse has increased disproportionately with the rest of the town, and obviously there's more traffic, and we went over the reasons why, but you know, with the guidance systems now, GPS and things, seems like they always route people instead of going through the, the stop sign on Second to go north and then take a right on, eastbound on Ninety-Sixth, during heavy traffic hours, it takes a while. They'll shoot right through, just keep going east on Ninety-Fifth till Grand Concourse. It is a lot faster, and, but you see a lot more traffic there, and it is a lot, a danger, Tracy mentioned that cars, you know, just turn into my driveway, you know, put out a blinker, they'll shoot by on the left side, passing me by, you know, kids out there playing around. Also, police too, often are the worst offenders, you know, as mentioned earlier, on nearby streets as well, so. You know, I think that that specific section, not just because we live there and kids are there, I mean, obviously they're all over the town, but I think if you look at you know, the, the increase in traffic because of the rerouting to avoid those stoplights, I think it's something that's a little more urgent, maybe in other areas. And if you look at the previous studies done, I saw one in two thousand fifteen for the shores, they recommended, not for that specific area, but similar situation, a partial barrier, not closing the street completely, but just putting a barrier on one side of traffic to control the flow to one side, which I think may be, you know, a possible solution, it wouldn't be very expensive, but I don't think it would create, you know, the traffic problems, but it would eliminate, I think, the danger, the hazard that, that cut-through traffic presents, so, thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment, okay?
Good evening, council, my name is Giselle Kovak, two nine zero Northeast Ninety-Eighth Street. I first wanted to say, when I was listening to the discussion about the REC Center, I would encourage the village, if they're going to do renovations on bathrooms, to please consider gender-neutral bathrooms, village-wide, in any of their subsequent construction. But I wanted to address the campaign donation cap that was on the agenda. I was concerned about it for a couple of reasons. One is, you know, clearly from, we saw in our last election, the amount a candidate spends does not necessarily mean that they are going to, to win the campaign, so it shouldn't be a deterrent for anybody who wants to run and is concerned about not having enough funding. Quite the opposite, actually, I think this would, this would create a tendency for people who can self-fund, which means people who are wealthier, to do so, and that means that only the the richest in our community would sit here on the council, and I don't think that is a fair representative of who we are. The other concern I have is that it creates inequity for residents who have name recognition already. People who are already involved or who are incumbents, and would skew elections toward those incumbents and the kind of usual suspects who are involved, and discourage young people as well as new residents from running, and that means we're not getting new ideas and new energy and new participants in our process, so I hope you consider that, thank you so much.
Nancy Signo, thirteen oh one Northeast one hundredth Street. I just, I know I spoke, I was at another meeting with residents, and they thought that the REC Board was going to present next month, so they missed this meeting, and I really think that we should revisit the REC Center as a whole and survey the residents, because as you know, as part of the last election process, everybody wants a new REC Center rather than band-aid what we have, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, anyone else for public comment?
Jessica Pfeffer, I live, actually, if there was a window here, you could see my house, I'm at one eight seven Northeast one hundredth Street, and I was the one who brought it up. We have two spots that are in front of our house, and it is a constant revolving door of people coming to the village, people dropping off their electronics, people who are volunteering at the police station or going to the police station, there's just constantly cars there. And although I can understand why nobody would want to deal with the hassle down on the other side of the block, I hope there's a way that we can find a solution so that that spot's not a revolving door. I noticed that the police station, their parking lot, is almost always empty, so I wonder why that they always park outside of the gate, and maybe they should park inside the gate, so there's more public parking for people to be pushed in that direction instead of in front of our house. And that's it, thank you.
Hello, good evening, my name is Ariel Exposito, and I'm all, one of the neighbors on Ninety-Fifth Street too, so backing up Adam, Aaron, Steve, and Tracy about the speed bumps, they're definitely not working, and we have a lot of kids there, so something has to be considered about that and raise it, and there are, I think there are three, huh, sorry? But they're not working, three, back-to-back, and they don't work, so that's about it, thanks.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, council, Caroline Cardness, my address is the E twenty-four Northeast one hundredth Street. We've been residents here for a few years, we love the shores, are raising our family here. As Mr. Benton knows, I'm very passionate about the shores, I'm just here to echo Mr. Drabi and Giselle, I believe is your name, regarding the campaign finances, I do believe changing the ordinance would be a deterrent for new people to come in, as you can see through the last election, the person who raised the most money is not sitting up here today. I think you all are very fortunate, you have name recognition, you've been on the council, you played, played an integral role, but I, I think we should not deter future people, future young, new families that move in here that may want to sit on council as well and serve from running, thank you.
Just a short question about solar energy and
Could you come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, ma'am, please?
Yeah, just how feasible is it to put solar paneling on your recs?
Can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Pam Jarvis, I live at four eighty-nine Northeast one hundred first Street. And we have a Lamborghini in our neighborhood that goes up and down the street like a hundred miles an hour, black Lamborghini. I reported it. But how feasible is it for solar energy to be put on the REC Center and run the REC Center on solar? Because it's been done, I have some articles that I was gonna, I was going to copy for everybody on the panel here, but my computer ran out of ink, so I have it in my purse, but I'll bring it next time. About different places that are running their cities, their communities, their buildings, they're requiring solar to be put on apartments, new construction. And the idea of that being put on the REC Center just entered my mind a long time ago. You know, when they were discussing about putting solar on, on, on the REC Center. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else for public hearing? With having no further comments, public comment is now closed.
Consent agenda, items are routine self-explanatory matters and are not expected to require discussion or review. Items will be enacted by one motion if discussion is desired by any member of the public or of the council, the item must be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If the public wishes to speak on a matter on the consent agenda, they must inform the village clerk prior to the start of the meeting. They will be recognized to speak prior to the approval of the consent agenda. Item six say approval of the May seventh, twenty nineteen, village council meeting minutes. Item six be a resolution of the village council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, authorizing the village manager to execute the turf and landscape maintenance department-funded agreement between the Florida Department of Transportation and Miami Shores Village, and providing for an effective date. Madam Mayor, have not received any requests from the public to pull any of the items.
Very good, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item eight A, in ordinance of the village council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, amending appendix A, Article Five, Establishment of Regulations, Division Seventeen, Section five three six, Design Standards of Section Seven, Allowing the Use of Synthetic Turf, Providing for Conflicts, Providing for Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date, this item is sponsored by Councilman Jonathan Melz. Staff on this item is the Planning and Zoning Director.
I'll open up the floor to you. First, do we have any comments, and Mr. Melz, would you care to, any item?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and I think you, you're going to tell the audience, you're going to open it up to a hearing for comment on that after I just give a brief introduction, so it's your time to speak if you'd like. So as, as a quick background, as in Director Kendall's report, if you haven't seen it, this came about a few months ago where I proposed this because of concerns about wasting water, water consumption by regular grass, and residents had approached me about the need or their desire to do synthetic grass in their backyards. And it was barred according to our ordinances, yet a lot of people, who you all may know, were already doing it, so we thought it'd be best to bring this up before the council, to see if it's the right thing to change our law to make that, to make it permissible. And by doing that, we talked about the environmental effects, the pros, the cons, and it substantially, the pros outweighed the cons of it, especially when it's freedom of your choice, it's your property, and so therefore, this went through, it's on second reading now, and Mr. Kendall, do you, do you want to give anything else about any of the changes or anything before we open hearing?
Good evening, Travis Kendall, if the, just, I think I should give a brief summary of the, the topic, since there are two new members on the board, in case they have additional questions, I'm not going to go through all the details, I'm not going to go through all the specific requirements, but just as a, a basic understanding of, of what's being requested, the real change is to allow a maximum of six hundred square feet in the backyard, it's not, it's an amount not to exceed thirty percent, and that would allow for a small section or an area to be used not to exceed six hundred square feet, which is really the, the biggest issue. The, the type of material which would be permitted, and which would be allowed to be an inch and three-quarters, but no greater than two and a half inches, so it, it limits the, the pile or the length of it, requires a minimum and an established the maximum. It also requires that the material that's used actually has multiple colors, it doesn't allow for a single color, so it simulates natural grass, that's very important, it also has required drainage in the backyard, specifically to allow for the flow of water to percolate into the ground, not to limit that as well. So there are some, some additional changes, there are some setback requirements, in fact, speaking of which, if you look at within the ordinance, there's one correction that needs to be made. It is on page two of six, line sixteen, number five, it says, within three feet of a single-family residential structure, it's actually, needs to read prohibited within three feet of a residential structure. If that change could be added, I would appreciate that, and that basically is to allow for natural drainage to occur in and around single-family residential buildings, prevent it from, from water being up against the structure itself.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Kendall, with regard to that, it's similar, it's line nine, it's dealing with you, of the same page, dealing with your particular, or, or usual setbacks. If the product allows for drainage, and setback is usually because you don't want to affect negatively your neighbors, right?
Well, the
Why are we still requiring a three-foot setback?
Specifically, the, the setback from the property line is designed because the edge of the artificial turf requires a border, and what this would allow for is a natural sort of transition to the neighbor's property for those individuals who don't have a fence, so it's not like I've got an artificial area immediately adjacent to the neighbor's property, this would allow for a section of, of landscaping to occur between and to sort of buffer it, because maybe the neighbor doesn't want it, okay, so that's specifically why.
What about, though, if we're still trying to conserve water or allow residents, because what you're saying here, not you, but what the ordinance is saying, kind of you, is, is that you still have to have a three-foot setback with living material. Therefore, most, or unless you can get something that does not need to be watered, I'm afraid some people are still going to be watering because they have to maintain that setback. Would it be prudent, would it be understandable if we add a provision which says if you do have a fence, you are not mandated to have a setback?
Well, that would be whatever the council chooses to do at this point.
I mean, is there any other public policy, any other problems, not creating, creating a global shift in something?
No, and, and ultimately, you know, the, the idea is not to impact the neighbors, which is why it was written into there, if, if the council chooses to make that selection with fencing material, the only, the issue with that is, I have a fence today, I don't have a fence tomorrow. So if, if the, if the fence blows down in a hurricane and somebody doesn't, now you have the, the issue occurring, where there's no buffer between the, the artificial turf and the neighbor's property.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, and, and further, moving to the front, just, just so you know, there's really two sections that are involved with this, and the, the first section that we were just discussing was the backyard area. In the discussion which occurred, council and feedback from the residents said, we would like to, if you've seen the newer modern-type driveways, they actually have artificial turf areas between the slabs in the front. And so there's a new section which has been created or added to this as well, which allows for the artificial turf to be located specifically only in the front yard area where there is a driveway, and in that driveway area, the area between the slabs would be limited to a maximum of six inches. And then within that category, there's actually two categories, which is a permeable driveway and a non-permeable driveway, and there's regulation basically being created which would deal with both of those situations as well, so.
Think you do, do we have any public comment on this item? Comments from the council? Councilman LaFredo.
Not to give a discouraging word or to, but I, I can't support this ordinance. We only have two code enforcement personnel right now, and I just see this as opening the door to future problems, also, while the backyard, I'm not that dead against, although as you have creeping urbanization, you have two things, you're going to hear me talk about it later in the meeting, one is you have increased commercialization of single-family residential districts, and the other thing you have is paving over, paving over, paving over, and I, I'm very much against doing anything to put artificial turf in the front yards of homes, and like yourself, Madam Mayor, I spent a lot of February, March, and April in the front yards of Miami Shores Homes, pretty much every last one of them, so I'm familiar with them, so anyway, I can't support this.
Thank you. With that, do I have a motion?
I'm going to move to amend the ordinance before we, somebody calls a question or makes a motion to approve, and I would make the amendment as we discussed in line nine, so that the turf would be permitted in the setback, in the three-foot area of a property line as long as the property has a fence.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Is it your intent to amend it so that it reads turf shall not be permitted within thirty-six inches of an unfenced side property lot line?
Yes, it is.
I knew it. That motion to amend should be seconded.
All in favor?
On the amendment.
On the amendment, excuse me.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Do I have a motion to move ordinance eight A?
Hang on, just so we're clear, the one you're voting on also includes the correction from staff to line sixteen on page two, that was discussed earlier?
Yes, the word inserted permitted, or
Prohibited.
Prohibited within three feet of a single-family residential structure.
Thank you.
So do I have a motion to move item eight A, as amended by staff? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Item A B, in ordinance of the village council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, amending Article Four, Commercial Photography and Filming of the Code of Ordnances, Establishing Criteria, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflicts, Repealing All Ordnances Inconsistent Herewith, and Providing for an Effective Date, this item is sponsored by Vice Mayor Alice Birch.
As this is a public hearing, I'll open it up for any comment. Vice Mayor Birch, would you like to speak to the item?
So this item came up several months ago, in February, as a result of a, an ordinance that was seen as incomplete, especially by staff trying to issue these permits. In the ordinance, in the part that was being used, the language was difficult to interpret and caused some difficulty for some residents, admittedly few, who throughout the year get film permits and commercial photography permits. I think this new ordinance is a work of art, is, relates to the idea that a resolution also will back it up, so that the resolution can be, can be changed according to new things that come along. For example, drones. We had nothing in our previous ordinance about drones. Drone use has become very common and, you know, there was a desire on the part of staff, again, making these decisions with people, to have something very comprehensive that they can refer to and issue the permits fairly. So I think it's a great improvement. I commend our attorney and staff for coming up with this new ordinance accompanied by a resolution, which I understand will take the ordinance first.
Any comments from council? Councilman LaFredo.
Yes, again, I note that this doubles the amount of video filming permitted given structures. And I'm very concerned about, I saw what happened when I was out on the campaign trail about the proliferation of Airbnb's, especially in the Kmart area. And I'm concerned about commercialization of single-family residential areas. So with respect, and I have great admiration for my colleagues on the council and great respect for them, but I'm still going to vote against it.
Any other comments? Councilman Meltz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand, Councilman LaFredo, what you're saying, and I personally think this, the amount of permits are too much. And I was surprised that we didn't hear from the residents. The only residents we heard of wanted this passed. Therefore, it's not about what I want and what I think, it's what the residents want, with all due respect. Therefore, I will be voting for this because it's what the residents want, not my personal opinion.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Birch?
Well, I think one thing to keep in mind is throughout both the ordinance and the resolution, residents come first. The resident's input, the resident's approval for certain types of permits are highlighted throughout the, both the resolution and the ordinance. So that is exactly what we were attempting to do, be fair to all the residents surrounding any commercial film, photography, and permitting. So, thanks.
Any other comments? Councilman-
Brady, sorry.
Brady, sorry.
Can, I just wanted to ask the attorney, like, a quick question on this one. I'm noticing we are requiring written authorization from the owner. I mean, is that, that should prevent an absentee landlord from using a property regularly for filming, I would imagine?
Not really a legal question, it's more of a practical question. Absentee landlord theoretically still can provide written consent. I mean, I don't think that it, we put that there to guard against a situation where people are making applications to use the home without the homeowner's approval or knowledge, but I don't really view that as something that would be an onerous restriction. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion for item eight B?
I'd like to move item eight B.
Second. Yeah, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Ordinance passes.
Item nine A, a resolution of the Village Council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, adopting filming regulations pursuant to Article Four Commercial Photography and Filming of the Code of Ordinances and Providing for an Effective Date. Staff on this item, Mr. Village Manager.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am. Well, this is a, this is a follow-up of the previous ordinance. This basically outlines the rules and the guidelines that staff will be using in order to enforce the ordinance. And we've attached an Exhibit A that has all the filming regulations that we will use when someone comes before us and requests a permit. Right now, there's a lot of things, and as Vice Mayor Birch said, we didn't have anything about drones, which we've included that as well. So we've tried to address all of the various issues that come before the counter there when we're, when these film producers come and request a permit.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any comments from the council?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman LaFredo.
Yeah, I will be supporting this. It would be ludicrous to bring in extra filming without appropriate regulations. I think these regulations are excellent, and I will be supporting this.
Any other comments? With that, do we have a motion in favor?
I'd like to move a resolution nine A.
Okay. All, all in favor?
Madam Mayor, a second please.
I'm sorry. Do we have a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nine A passes.
Item nine B, a resolution of the Village Council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, designating resident-only parking areas within the right-of-way of certain areas. This item is sponsored by Councilman Sean Brady.
Councilman Brady.
All right, Madam Mayor. So this came to our attention because we did have a resident who was expressing a continued problem with parking there. When, just a tiny bit of background here, when this was adopted as an ordinance, it's designed so that by resolution, different areas can be included or excluded. And Mr. Manager, please correct me if I'm wrong, you know, on any of these parts. I believe enforcement is by the resident who lives there calling to inform somebody that, to inform the police that there's somebody parked in their yard that they didn't want parked there. And the other thing was that we do engage the people in that block to find out what their, you know, to get their temperature on it. I did also want to mention that Vice Mayor Birch had mentioned at the last meeting, the same, the issue with the, where people were parking, you know, for utilizing the waste recycling, or also for visiting Village Hall. And I think, I believe the manager was going to speak to the police about utilizing the lot, the other parking lot that they have available. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And we're going to install two visitor parking spaces there on the west end of our property there.
And I know that part of what we do as this process is canvas that neighborhood, and obviously a number of you came out today. Mr. Manager, did you receive any other feedback from the, from the community regarding this?
No, sir, I've not.
And we notified the people on the, on the block of the intention to-
That's why they got it. We passed out a letter to every house there. Advising this meeting time.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just a little bit more background. You know, some of the speakers mentioned that perhaps other streets would be more appropriate. Other streets have already been dealt with. The ones that we, that were the most critical to begin with are the earliest ones that we dealt with and approved, the resident-only parking. And in those areas, it has been very successful for those residents. They've been very grateful for it. And in the areas where we had people say, "We really don't need this," we tried to think of other solutions. And one of the ones at the last meeting, when we discussed this, was another solution would be visitor parking only. And we don't have any spaces on the south side of this building that are designated visitor only. So it is true that people do probably end up flowing over to the most affected home because, or homes, because they are, there's a lot of traffic here for police and the Village Hall. So in essence, this is, I think, the third or fourth designation that we've made for resident-only parking, largely with a very positive result.
Yes. Attorney Seraphin.
I have to confess, I don't recollect exactly how we worded the ordinance, but I'm asking if anyone on the dais remembers, are we required to designate an entire street? What I'm, it has to be a full street? Because what I'm hearing is that there's apparently a problem with one or two houses, and then there's a whole bunch of other people who would prefer not. And I'm just wondering if there's some way to address it without going whole hog in one direction or the other.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am. From an enforcement perspective, it would be awful difficult, and we had this discussion on 100th Street, east of Second Avenue, where you had the first three houses, and then you had somebody on the end that didn't want it, and someone in the middle that did. And so, you know, how do you put up the appropriate signage? You would have signs everywhere saying, "Okay, from here to here, you have to have a permit. From here to here, you can park, and from here to here, you need a permit." So it became very difficult to try and figure out the enforcement process. So we basically said that, "Look, if we're going to do this, we're going to do all or nothing. We're going to do the whole block, put up a sign at each end of the block so that you would know, a motorist would know that, okay, if you park on this block, you've got to have a permit."
Okay.
Councilman Meltz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only other suggestion I have is take it outside the gambit of our ordinance and do it on a case-by-case basis without the teeth of enforcement. I don't know if that helps you, but a sign right there at the edge of the property saying, "No parking," right there, may alleviate people from parking. Therefore, we're not contaminating the rest of the street for everybody else who has a valid concern, they don't want to participate. And with all due respect, there seems to be only one house which wants to participate. So that would be my suggestion.
Or a sign maybe says, "No Village Parking," or "No Village Hall Parking," something like that.
Mr. Manager?
Well, we would, I would, Mr. Seraphin and I are going to have to confer to see exactly the legalities, because once you put up "No Parking," that means the resident can't park there either. And so that's-
That's what I'm thinking, something like "No Village Hall Parking."
I'm thinking of something that'll have more of a practical effect and less of a legal effect.
So procedurally, if it's okay with the sponsor, I'd move to table this.
Madam Mayor? Yeah, I would, I know we were trying to provide some relief, but I think in order to research a couple of the additional issues and also give some time to, I know we're going to do some other things here to try to accommodate the issues, that, yeah, I would be in favor of tabling this.
I have one quick question. When we have designated these streets, do we provide to the residents passes for their guests?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
And how many per, per home?
We start off by, we give every resident that has a registered car there, we give them a permanent decal that's affixed to their windshield. Then we give them five visitor passes, and then we give them as many, like, let's say you're having a party, you can come in and say, "Look, I'm having a party, a Memorial Day blowout this weekend, and I need, I'm going to have 20 guests. You can come in, we'll get 20, we'll give you 20 hang tags that have the Village logo, and for that, for that particular day, we'll write it on there, we'll give them, give them out free of charge, and they give them out to their guests to put on their, hang them from their rearview mirror, or put them on their dashboard."
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brady, do you have a motion? To table?
Not in-
No.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Meltz's motion, just a second.
Do we have a second on the motion to table the item? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is table, I mean, item is tabled.
Item 10A, discussion impossible action on Miami Shores election financing by candidates. This item is sponsored by Vice Mayor Alice Birch.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Birch.
Thank you. So what's very interesting about, about bringing this up is that, first of all, I consider it something that is going to vanish, and we have about maybe now, in the next month or so, to talk about issues like this, or they tend to go away since the next election isn't for two years. And so I, I was intrigued by having a discussion with my colleagues, as well as as the public, as to whether or not this was a time that we should make any change whatsoever. And fairness and equitability and ability for anyone who should decide to, to be able to run for council with the existing rules, as they are, is a very interesting question to me. And I think when I, when I think about what I've heard about the last election and how candidates went about funding it, there's such a wide variety that there's a sort of a, well, I feel that there's a rich opportunity here for us to have a public discussion. And, and that's really the, the item. The item, my memo is not particularly crystal clear, but I, I do feel that in my memo, I was trying to say, "This is a good time to discuss this, and we could have a richer understanding of where we stand on this issue." But it's not suggesting an ordinance, and it was, or in any particular language. And it is not saying that we couldn't go about it in some other way, such as to have a pledge, that when you are signing on to be a candidate, you could pledge a certain type of financial way of fundraising, or limit, or excess, if you wish. And so I, I'm, but that being said, I wanted to introduce a couple of key points. One, are any of us interested in changing the resident requirement from six months to a year, since that is what we require of boards and committees? And it seems rather strange to have only six months, a time period of residency if you're going to have an office. Even though it only pays a dollar a year, it is still an office, an elected official. And the second point I wanted to have in the discussion was, shall we have any, shall we consider any kind of, it was very relevant that in 2015, when I first ran, it was the first year that you could donate $1,000 per person. And since then, as one might expect, the average amount of money being spent per candidate has gone up. So is that a trend that we're perfectly comfortable with? So I'd like that to be part of the discussion. And the third, the third item really is PACs or political committees. So either one of those influencing the campaign. Other, you know, the city of Dania Beach found that it was something that they did not want to have in their community. Is it throwing the baby out with the bathwater to limit a PAC? Let's say, for example, we're having a simultaneous vote for the community center bond, and certain residents have formed a PAC to support the community center bond, or to oppose the community center bond? And candidates are lined up, and then those PACs would be able to be, have donations from a PAC. So is that something that we want to continue to allow, or are PACs something that is, make people uncomfortable? So those are the elements of discussion that I'd like to have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Birch. Do we have any comments? I want to start with Mr. LaFredo.
I have a question. I have a question. I'm going back to the Florida Bar Convention and the Citizens United discussion at Alan Schwartz's First Amendment seminars. And doesn't Citizens United restrict what we can do in these matters?
There is a whole host of cases out there on campaign finance reform in general. Citizens United essentially says that money is speech. And you've got all sorts of free speech issues. I haven't researched any of this, because I think step one is to figure out what the interest of the council is. I would like to, you know, do that research, I would like to look at other ordinances and talk to other city attorneys who've passed those ordinances so that I don't have to reinvent the wheel on your dime. But the short answer, Mr. LaFredo, is yes, you've identified some of the key legal issues. I'm particularly concerned about any suggestion that we try to regulate the amount of money from inside the village versus outside the village. That seems fraught with potential legal issues to me.
Thank you. Counsel, okay. I, Councilman LaFredo, I echo the exact same sentiment. Counsel, okay. I, I, Councilman Lefredo, I echo the exact same sentiment you have, because in that court ruling, it was my understanding that the Supreme Court saw campaign finance, campaign fundraising as a form of speech. And that was sort of the basis of that opinion. So, I would be curious as to how this would all play in. And, and Mr. Seraphin, I have another question for you with regard to potentially eliminating corporate donations or PACs. Is that within our purview? Is there, there not a legal issue with that as well?
There is.
Or potential?
There is. And I don't know the answer.
And with all due respect, Vice Mayor Birch, I mean, I think that concerns over escalating campaign costs are legitimate, and I'm certain that your intentions for this discussion are well-meaning. But as I read through this, and having some experience in it, I think what's not being considered is the unintended consequences of what you're, what you're wanting to discuss. I do believe that contributions can, the amount can either help or discourage. And I, I think the unintended side of it is there are new voices in every community, in this community in particular, that don't have the power of the incumbency. And when you don't have the power of the incumbency, and you have to get your message out, then you have to have the ability to raise funds, to get your message out to folks that you've not otherwise met, or don't otherwise know who you are. If they're not your neighbors, you've got to traverse the village, and I think that's important. And I think we have to be very careful with this issue. I have deep concerns that, thinking about such a low individual contribution, not only hurts in getting your name out, but it restricts political communications. And I think that would have a detrimental effect. And, you know, quite frankly, the truth is incumbents are not as affected by campaign reforms. And there are, you know, arguably, you could say that their resources really can't be met, given the advantage inherent to, to an incumbent. Likewise, you don't have, there's nothing in here that suggests we should cap people who are self-funding. If there's a person out there, an individual, who's looking to run, and they're self-funding, there's no cap on that. So presumably, someone with means could actually self-fund beyond what a candidate could raise. We don't have any discussion of that. And there are, you did include some supporting documents here. But I have to, you know, let the council know that there are a vast majority of cities and towns in the state that have been operating under these types of rules for years. It's also worth noting that we have strict disclosure rules, which promote transparency and accountability. The amount raised doesn't necessarily equate to nefarious outcomes nor success. And so, I think, you know, when we talk about who's a qualified candidate, and who might not wanna run because they don't think they can raise the money, or raise enough, we have a transparent process in place in terms of campaign reporting. Let the voters decide who they think is qualified. You know, after the judging, the candidates on their own merits. And they decide with what and who has, they can see who's contributing because it's transparent. And our reporting is very clear and very succinct. And I think after candidates get out there, present themselves, present their policies, their platforms, I think we try to trust the voters to make the final decision as to who represents this village. I actually have spent the last few days doing a lot of research, and I'm not comfortable. I mean, I'm glad this is a discussion item. I think there has to be more research done in order for us to intelligently opine on this matter. I do appreciate you bringing it up. I understand there are concerns out there, but I, I wanna be careful about the implications for us as a village when we're looking at campaign reform. And that's as it applies to individual contributions, as well as PACs and corporations. I wanna make sure we're making legally sound decisions. And I'd also like to say, but for, you know, raising money, I wouldn't be able to sit up here with all of you who are incumbents. Because I think I'm a new voice in the community, and I think there's others out here that deserve to be heard, and that deserve to have a chance to sit on this dais. So, I would urge my colleagues to consider all the things I've just mentioned, and I, I would like to see more research done on this before we can have a meaningful discussion on it, if a discussion at all. Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor, I think my, I definitely understand the concern people are having. I think one of my main concerns was in a, how we would go about, you know, enforcing or, and policing such, you know, donations, and vetting out like what's a valid PAC and what's not. I just wanted that to be part of, you know, whatever research or discussion that we do. I think that's, you know, an important piece of it. Like, how would you even properly vet those, you know, those donations? And I think the only other thing I would, I would ask is if we were gonna bring it up again, if it would be possible, you know, either for the clerk or the manager to reach out to, you know, the city of Dana Beach, and just see what their experience has been with, you know, with this. You know, based on the fact that they have an ordinance, you know, that's very, yeah, very different than, than what we're doing here, and that like, looks like it may be fraught with legal concern. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mills?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I don't accept PAC money. But I'm, I'm not in favor of banning or barring any one of you all, or anybody one of you. If you wanna accept the money, accept the money. I don't really care. I don't, personally, I don't believe in it. But I don't think it's our job to legislate that, number one. Number two, is I'm not in favor of, of, you know, saying you can only raise this or raise that. Again, that's your prerogative. If the residents like it or don't like it, they like it from one candidate, they don't, that's, that's their decision. I just don't think it's, it's our role. I did hear some residents who, who didn't like it, maybe they voted accordingly. And that's their right. But I, I don't like it. However, I, I do like the aspect of fixing the six-month residency. That makes no sense whatsoever. If we require residents to come before us with at least a year of living here before they can apply to a board, I think a candidate for this should be at least a year, if not more. So, I would be open to further discussions on that, and I thank you very much for bringing that up, because I was ignorant of that. I had no idea. So, I, I think that's something for this council to discuss.
Vice Mayor Birch?
So, Mr. Seraphin, do you have any input on the fact that the six months is in the charter? So, would the council be able to make a change to that by ordinance? Or how is a charter change done?
Rather than go on memory, which suggests to me you're not, you may need a referendum. Why don't you talk amongst yourselves and give me two minutes? Because that's what I was looking up when you asked the question.
Okay, we'll talk amongst ourselves.
Meanwhile, you could talk to Isabella about her conversation with Dana Beach.
Right. I briefly had a conversation with Mr. Schneider, the city clerk for the city of Dana Beach. He's only been there a year and a half, but they have not had any issues with compliance. But when I did pose the question of, okay, so in the event that you do have an issue of non-compliance, how do, who polices it, who enforces it? Because as a filing officer, our role is ministerial in nature. So, I know that it's not him who would be able to enforce. And his question, his answer was, well, it would have to be the code enforcement board. And I said, well, how would you navigate those waters? And what hasn't happened yet? So, that was the answer, and that was the gist of the conversation. So, it's more of a trial and error situation so far.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we know how long that particular ordinance has been in place?
I can look that up real quick.
Should say on the bottom of our copy.
So, just, Madam Mayor, just so that I can direct this to you, this, the idea of making any kind of limitations, it really is fresh in my mind that this changed from $500 to $1,000, just in 2015. That was only four years ago. And the idea that we're a small village, and that perhaps it would enable, you know, there's a really, it seems like when I've discussed this, it's a flip side to just about everything, aspect of you bringing up. But it would enable someone who felt that they could, they could swing it with, let's say, a budget, a very low budget, and, and they, they jump right in because they know ahead of time that they're not gonna be able to raise a certain amount. So, I don't at all want to, I really, just speaking to you, I don't, I wasn't trying to uphold the idea of an incumbency at all. Well, first of all, we have term limits. I mean, we have eight years is the limit. But, and we've had many people rotate through the council, and many people, including myself, elected for the first time, not having an incumbency, or, or more than just name recognition. And you get name recognition from, from certain activities. It's a, it's an unintended consequence of being active in your community. So, I'm just trying to bring this up because I saw this incredible difference in styles. Councilman Mills apparently didn't even have any printed literature, because he had a feeling that it shouldn't be, you know, that it, it was sort of polluting to, to have a whole bunch of extra literature around. And other people don't feel about, you know how we ran into some residents and how they felt about signs? So, there was this incredible array of thinking about how this should go forward. And I just thought it would be instructive to all of us to have a conversation about it. But it certainly wasn't, I mean, I didn't spend no money, so.
That's the power of the incumbency. You don't have to spend a lot of money because you, Madam Vice Mayor, have been here. You have, you have been active in the community, and people know who you are. In my case, and I don't take this personally, I'm, I'm looking at this purely from-
Well, I'm just asking you not to.
Well, I won't. I'm just looking at this purely from having been in politics for a number of years, and there are a number of pitfalls that are involved when you start looking into campaign finance reform at every level, the federal, state, and local level. I use myself as an example, because I think I'm the newest one sitting up here. And I did fairly okay on fundraising, which was not very fun. But the only way that I was, felt like I could compete, and the only way that I think that I was gonna be able to get my message out and do the activities that I wanted to do in this community, was to raise money to, to be able to, and that's how I thought I was perceived. And I should have the ability to make that decision myself. And if the voters didn't like it, then they can, they can vote me up or down. But I was very transparent. I was endorsed. I did not accept PAC money, but I was endorsed. But I just think that, you know, we have to be careful when we're talking about these things, because there is a double effect that could occur. And I certainly don't want to suggest that, you know, this, this doesn't, seeing the numbers that have come out, it doesn't have a negative effect on people who would otherwise run. But I think, at the same time, we have to give the people the ability to access their donor base. And if they have a large donor base, they should be able to access it so that they can help spread their message, their political communications, which is very important. So, that's sort of where I'm coming from. And I'd also, let me add this. Unfortunately, in this last election, we had some negative influence from outside of our village, right? And, you know, not feeling one way or the other about it, I'm suggesting that if that candidate did not have the money to at least push back, then that outside influence was just free to wheel against this person. So, you know, you gotta look at it, in my opinion, my humble opinion, from several different directions. And quite frankly, you know, no matter how much you raise or don't raise, you still have to go out there. You have to knock on doors every day. You still have to show up at the forums. And again, at the end of the day, I think it's, you know, we let the voters decide who they think is most qualified with what they have or don't have.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would, I think we've had a good discussion. I would move to table the item so that, with the proviso that we allow the city attorney to research the issues that have been brought to his attention.
We have a motion on the floor to table the item. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Before we move on, Madam Mayor, I, I do believe, after having looked into it, that an amendment of this sort to the charter will require a referendum.
Thank you.
Item 10, the Update on Green Corridor Pace Program. This item is sponsored by Councilman Sean Brady.
Councilman Brady, would you like to discuss this item?
Well, thank you to everyone who's made it to this point. I, I think I originally was planning to have this on the agenda a while back, and then we decided to wait until we had our two new councilmen join us, because thought it would be a, you know, a good thing for, you know, for you to hear about. And also, if I remember right, we had an agenda that had about 10,000 items on it that night, and so it was better pushed off. Now, it is also very late in the evening, and so, I, I'll make this, this, I'll make this brief. But I think that I wanted to make sure that the people in the council were aware of the progress and the effect of the Green Corridor Pace District, Special Taxing District. And I know it's a very interesting kind of public-private partnership that I think most people, including myself, were not really aware of before getting more involved with the village. And one of the things that, that I think everybody, you know, here, who's, you know, worked with me, knows I'm very concerned about sustainability and renewable energy. I've got like a solar power system installed on the roof of the house. Something we're definitely encouraging the village to look into where they can deploy solar power effectively. And, you know, just a number of other things. New windows and doors, things that are more energy efficient. And Miami Shores is actually one of the founding villages of the Property Assess Clean Energy Program, the Green Corridor District that we have here in South Florida. The, which is terrible. I should know the other members right off the top of my head. But it's Councilman, I was gonna say Councilman Lefredo. Would you, would you help me? That Councilman Lefredo was one of the people on the council when this was put into effect.
South Miami, Cutler Bay, Palmetto Bay, I think Coral Gables, and City of Miami, and I'm missing somebody.
And Pine Crest.
Pine Crest, that was it.
And Miami Shores. So, and, and I also wanted to thank this council for reappointing me to serve on that board for the next two years. It is definitely a, like many of our boards, you know, it's technical. There's a lot of knowledge required to be effective, and, and I appreciate to have the extra time to serve because it took a while to, you know, become an effective board member there. But the way that most of you may have heard of the activities of the district is through the AgCNTV for Y-Green and Alternative Energy, you know, financing. So, Y-Green is the, the company that implements the program here in Florida. And just to give a very, very brief outline, you know, basically, this is a program that is designed for energy efficiency and resiliency. Improvements to your home that can be financed over, you know, different periods of time, usually around 15 to 20 years, and where, instead of you taking equity out of your home and giving that money, you know, to the bank or somebody like that, it appears on your property taxes. It's part of a special assessment. It's, and, and then the bonds that are issued by the board to the market are what generate the, you know, the, the revenue needed to, to run the program and to back the program. And what I wanted to bring to the, to the board was basically just they had finally, there's many different ways that these types of energy districts are measured. And recently, the University of Southern California Schwarzenegger Institute was engaged by Y-Green to do a study on the effectiveness of it in Florida and California. And there were some really amazing findings. So, I wanted the council and the village to realize that we're part of a really important, useful, public-private partnership that has to this time. So, they were looked, looked back from 2013 to 2018, and tried to look at what impact on the economy in the local area the program has had so far. So, one of the things I thought was great, it said, "Cumulative savings on insurance premiums estimated to be $708 million", and this is due to improvements that people have made through, financed through the program. Avoided property damage of $507 million. Some of the, some of the metrics here are mixed in with Florida and California, but those two are Florida metrics. And I know that in addition to some of those direct benefits to, to consumers, it's also, you know, created a large number of jobs, and has done a lot of good stuff for the, for the greenhouse gas situation as far as reducing greenhouse gas through, you know, things like solar panels. But primarily, we are trying to push- But primarily, we are trying to push a lot of adoption of solar panels, but most of the advantages that you'll see here are coming from energy efficiency improvements. So, you know, windows, roofs, but a lot of the huge benefits to people in Florida and South Florida in particular is that storm hardening. So it's been actually wildly successful, really glad to hear that. Each of you has the, I think this is, it's in the public record as well, in the agenda. So, and I know everybody on the council got a copy of the study. It has been peer-reviewed and published now, which is nice. But I just wanted to call out some of the highlights. And one of the things that they, we are trying to figure out how to do is to better build a little public awareness around the district itself because it has like a technical name this long and, you know, no real home. If you were to go search about this program on the internet, you're going to get a couple of pages on Miami-Dade County, you know, explaining what this program is. And most of what you're going to get on it is, you know, the advertisements that you see from Y-Green. And I really just wanted to give that kind of brief overview to the council. But the other thing that I wanted to do was to give the, you know, the council an opportunity to give me any questions or anything that they would like brought to the attention of the Green Corridor District Board. So I am definitely here to, you know, take back any of that feedback, you know, to the council and I'd like to, or to the board from the council. And I'd like to try to at least annually report on what's going on with the district. And one of the things that is kind of interesting about it, and I will try to bring more reports back to the council, is that because it's made up of those cities, you get to hear what these different cities are also trying to do as far as pushing sustainability and energy efficiency in their communities. One of the board members is Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor Stoddard of South Miami, who's a local, he's a professor, and he is somebody you may have seen in the paper recently did an experiment where he put his house on full solar for a week to see what it would be like, like disconnected from the grid. And he has a battery backup system. So I'm going to be talking to him about that a little bit because I have the solar power system, but I didn't do the battery backup. So I'm saving greenhouse gas, but when the power goes out, I also have no power. So, but, no, but with that being said, I did want to give, and I know it's late, I wanted to give the council, and if, obviously you may need to think about it, and if it's something you want to bring to the next meeting, I will make sure to bring to that board. But one of the things that they are looking to do now is they have a certain amount of revenue that's coming in as part of the program fees, and it's been building up. So now one of the things they're trying to do is look at programs that would be effective in the area to drive forward the mission of the program. So one of the things that's being discussed right now, for instance, is to identify some designated, and Miami Shores, I believe, does not have any, you know, community redevelopment area or any, you know, disadvantaged, federally recognized disadvantaged neighborhood, but there are some parts of the county that do. And they're looking at taking a certain amount of the money and doing a pilot to do spray insulation in the homes because of these people that live there. Because what happens very often is our most disadvantaged members of our community, who very often are renters, often have astronomical power bills because they have horrible appliances, no insulation, bad windows, doors, ancient air conditioner. So it's, you know, and we know that living in South Florida for at least half the year is really difficult without air conditioning. And I was very, you know, surprised to learn that, you know, a lot of these people have, you know, three, $400 power bills in the summer in their small, you know, 900 square foot rental because it's just, you know, window, air conditioner, there's no insulation. But that's just the kind of thing I wanted the council to be aware of and to think a little bit about. And with that, if anybody had any questions or anything they wanted to share. So thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Brady. Any comments?
Well, I would like to thank you, Sean, for serving on this because I know there's some travel involved and it's a time commitment. But I think that they're doing a great job getting the message out. I've seen a lot of good publicity and I know that that counteracts the occasional hit that a program like this takes if someone goes to the media and says, I took out a loan and I haven't been able to meet the payments, those kinds of things. So I think this report does, you know, goes a long way to countermand that and make the positives really well-known. So, but anyway, thank you for your expertise now on that board and your input.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Lefredo?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Vice Mayor Birch has said and point out, I know it's late, so I'll be brief, but this is a really, this program has really steamrolled and ballooned and it's responsible, I think, for a lot of the reasons we didn't get hammered by Irma because a lot of people had already put in the storm hardened windows and doors and things like that. So it really is a great benefit to the local community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Brady?
Just my final comment, I would say, just to give an idea of the magnitude, we've recently authorized a new series of bonds, $2 billion. So it's, there's a significant amount of financing activity improvements going on. So, thanks.
Very good. Thank you.
Village offices will be closed on Monday, May 27, 2019, in honor of Memorial Day. Regular garbage pickup schedules will be followed. The village will present a Memorial Day ceremony on Monday, May 27, at 9:00 a.m. in Memorial Park. In case of inclement weather, the ceremony will take place at the community center. Please join the village manager, Tom Benton, for his annual informational meeting on hurricane preparedness on Wednesday, May 29, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. at the community center. There are vacancies on the Dodgers Charter School Board, four, Library Board of Trustees, one, and Code Enforcement Board, two. Applications can be found on the village website and the clerk's office and will be accepted through Tuesday, May 24 and June 7, respectively. The next meeting of the village council will be held at Village Hall on Tuesday, June 4, 2019, beginning at 6:30 p.m. Plastic Reduction Community Workshops will be held at the community center on Monday, June 10, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And please remember to visit the village website for more information on village events, departments, and to sign up to receive agenda notifications. Village Council comments?
Thank you. Do we have any comments this evening? We'll start with you, Councilman Lefredo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that I did attend the first plastic reduction workshop held by Councilman Meltz last evening and attended also by the Vice Mayor, and it was wonderful and informative. And I know they'll have another one coming up. The other thing I want to mention is I want us, as a council, to be considered about funding a new community center with reasonable expectations and a reasonable budget. That's just my opinion, but I just wanted to put my two cents in on that.
Thank you. Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first thing I want to say is it was great to have a lot of people come out and give public comment tonight, but I wanted to reiterate, and I know this is something we've spoken about before, to please reach out to the council by email, phone, you know, as soon as there's an issue. Coming out to speak is great, you know, and encouraged, but I'm sometimes concerned that the very first time I'm hearing something that somebody's been suffering from a long time is, you know, coming in here for a public comment. Please reach out to the council. We want to try to do whatever we can to move issues, you know, and help the public as much as possible. Only other thing I want to mention, we've got this traffic calming study was done and that is going to be what's going to drive, you know, and I know you'll be hearing a lot more of this, that's going to drive a lot of the prioritization, but it was still great to hear a lot of the input from the people today. I'm sure that area will be revisited. I know one other thing, I heard somebody had mentioned, I know she's not here anymore, but about the, you know, the village looking at the practicality of solar. I just wanted to let people know that the village is looking at doing that. And the last thing I wanted to mention, I think that we're going to need to try to look at what's going on with like the community center and the rec center a little more broadly and understand that many of the village structures, including this village hall, are old and are in need of repair. And I think that we are in a very, there's a very big need for some significant capital improvement to be made. So I know I'm going to, you know, be reaching out to staff and ask the, you know, the manager to help to start pulling together kind of like a priority list or wish list so we could get an idea of what the size of what type of investment needs to be made in the community to sustain it for another 50 years. And I want to make sure that we think, or we think about all of the things that need to get taken care of. So, and thanks everybody for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Meltz?
Thank you. I would, right now, our village newsletter is mailed, is it monthly, to all residents or all homes. I'd like staff to look into allowing residents to opt into an email option. Therefore, we don't need to print anymore and then absorb the postage. Some people have asked me, where can I get it? It would be nice that the way we do the agenda for these meetings is people can get a notification through our system that the agenda's available and they can click through it, read it, be prepared and all that. I think it'd be a great idea to check that out for the village newsletter. It seems wasteful, what we're doing now.
You're right.
Okay, can we publicize it and do a push? Or can we get some numbers for next meeting? How many people are, maybe, maybe put it on the agenda so we can talk about it? How many people actually have taken advantage of that? Because I just don't think it's enough. I would like to talk about the plastic workshop, so it's June 10. And just so you all know, if you would like to participate, the reason for it is to hear what the residents want. I had proposed to do them so we could find out if the residents want the council to possibly ban plastic bags, to ban paper bags, to put a 25 cent fee on bags, to ban straws, to do nothing. So that's the reason for these workshops. So, you know, if you can attend, that'd be great. If you can't attend, you want to reach out to the council on that issue, feel free to do that. But as most of you know, the governor or the legislature did not ban communities from taking action against plastic. So the time is now. So like to see what the pulse of the community is. Therefore, at the community center, Monday, June 10, 6:30 to 8:00. Love to see you there.
Vice Mayor Birch?
So, thank you. I'll just be very brief. I wanted to underscore how wonderful our Memorial Day ceremony is. I'd like to invite everyone out there to come. It's a great way to start the day. Yes, it is nine o'clock on a holiday, but the students and the parents and the whole family effect of celebrating Memorial Day and starting out with a brief service at nine o'clock is really, really rewarding for people. And we have a wonderful speaker and it will be a celebration for us and for the Memorial Day idea. And so I hope that everyone comes. I'd like to thank you, Councilman Meltz, for putting together your plastics workshop. It was very informative and carefully put together and I learned a lot. And I'd also like to say, in terms of the campaign finance, that I wouldn't mind if that whole thing went to bed, but I did appreciate the discussion very much. And I always appreciate the points of view that come forward that I never thought of. So thank you very much to everyone for putting up with that item.
Thank you. Councilman Meltz and I are on the same page on this email newsletter. I was going to ask about that. It was in my notes as to whether or not. So I concur with what he said earlier about, let's see if we can get that moving, get more residents involved in just getting it in their email box. Save us a lot of paper, I agree. And I will be attending your next plastic workshop. I couldn't make the last one, but I appreciate that you're doing that on the 10th and I'll make sure to help spread the word to get residents there. I think it's a very important workshop to attend. Do we have any other comments this evening?
Oh, Madam Mayor? Super quick, I just want to thank the manager and Public Works. I noticed, you may have seen in here, our block there, a new doggy poop canister and I appreciate that very much.
I did see that, yes.
I meant to thank you about that before, but I appreciate that. And I'm hoping that that will encourage people to put it into that container. So, thank you. And I'm looking for that littering ordinance.
Thank you. I do have one last comment. I just wanted to say, one of our village residents who's not here this evening, Mr. Dan Brant, he donated a pool table to our community center. And I wanted to thank him for that because he donated it at no cost and the children sent him the most wonderful thank you notes and he was very proud and I'm so pleased that he went out of his way to do that. So I wanted to thank Mr. Brant for donating that much-needed pool table and some other amenities to our community center. So thank you to him. And with that, is there anything-